Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for July 11, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law. It's been a year and a half since it was enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panels, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Analysts are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those in the videos who are closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. So yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Okay. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
President.
Mr. Shepherd.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam President, President.
Good morning.
Here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair and President.
Good morning. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on the agenda this morning is the approval of the hearing minutes from April 25.
All right. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 25.
May I have a second?
That's good.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes, yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have the extensions at 9:30. First, we have case BOA 104 6127, the address being 201 to 241, 241 Stewart Street. This is the, I believe, this is the second request for an extension, which is due from July, today, July 11. And the, excuse me. So if there is a...
That's the, sorry, Mr. Stenbridge. The board originally granted relief on August 28, 2020, and granted one extension of this relief expiring on August 28, 2023. So this is the applicant's second request for a one-year extension.
Yes.
Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Mathali Biswas, attorney for the applicant. The developer is pursuing its additional permits and approvals for the project. In the past year, we have submitted a draft TAPA to the BPDA and are working with the BPDA to finalize the same. Our CMP has been submitted for approval. Our APCC application was approved last month. In fact, this morning, some members of our team are meeting with the BPDA to discuss and finalize the street skate plans, after which we will be filing our PIC submission. And we're also simultaneously working on submitting our applications for an amended garage permit and inflamables license in the coming weeks. And so we are actively and diligently pursuing our additional permits here, and therefore we have requested a one-year extension until August 28, 2024. And if anyone has any questions, we are available. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a lot of alphabets you're going through. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion? I'm sorry, was that a question? Okay, hearing that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant an extension till August 28, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Did you second Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases. First being BOA 119 2893, the address being 23 Newton Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 119 2938, with the address being 25 Newton Street. The board originally granted this relief on August 13, 2021, so the relief remains valid until August 13 of this year. This is the applicant's first request for a one-year extension on both cases. And we should decide to extend the, for an extension if we so feel.
Is the applicant present?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Can you just let us know what your need for the extension is and where you are in your process progress?
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. It was, I received approval two years ago during, it was just during the pandemic when I was home as a teacher with my two toddlers. And just financial reasons, I'm very busy, so I didn't have a chance to address everything. I have had updated, um, by sprinklers, so I've been, as part of the process, getting papers ready. I just haven't been able to get everything ready until, you know, as of recently, really getting things started within the last six months or so. So the one year would be very, would be very helpful.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'd prefer for motion to grant extension to August 13, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Great, thank you so much.
Next, we have case BOA 843335, with the address being 42 Chestnut Street. This is, this is the third request for an extension, the most recent, will expire on August 7 of this year.
Is the applicant present?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ian Urquhart from the law firm, London, Fesh, at 155 C. Ward, Boston. For us, it's really been, you know, slowdown from the pandemic and getting an architect onboard that can help shepherd us through the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission process. So we've engaged with an architect, but apparently the backlog is such that they're having trouble getting to our matter and attending to our kind of smaller project in Beacon Hill as opposed to some others. And our client is actually looking to see if they can get a new architect onboard to move along quicker, but we're still, you know, we've still got some process ahead of us with the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission, as you know, they want to make sure everything is, uh, looks great and it works with the neighborhood there. So, you know, we're working through that piece.
Understood, thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the extension till August 7, 2024.
May I have a second?
One second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair votes yes as well, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. And before we proceed, I just want to remind applicants that we have a five-member board today. Applicants have the option to defer to a later full board, and we will repeat this throughout. Thank you.
Next, we have the 9:30 hearing for groundwater conservation over Lake District Owen. We have case BOA 146 3043, with the address being 101 Chestnut Street. Is the applicant and/or the representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Timothy Burke. I'm the architect for the project. I have a business address of 142 Berkeley Street in Boston. And this is a G-Cod review for underpinning work that has, we were repairing the pilings for this building, and as part of that, we're installing a stormwater recharge system as well.
Mr. Semenali, are you present?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning. Members of the board, good morning as well. Chris Ben Semenali, Boston Water Trust, and we have both the Boston water show approval and no harm letter from the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions on the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have hearing for a building code, that case being BOA 147 5953, with the address being 169 Maverick Street. Is the applicant and/or the representative present?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Laurence Cutino from Richard Lindsay's office with a business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. We're going to be requesting a deferral on this one. There seems to be a notice issue and an update to the building code refusal, so we need to get that sorted out with ISD.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is...
Yes, sir.
I would like to suggest August 29th as the deferral date.
Okay. Does that work for the applicant?
I believe if there's a, because of the notice issue, we'll have to, yes.
Yes, okay. With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to August 29, 2024.
May I? You mean 23?
23, I'm sorry, 23.
Thank you, thank you. May I have a second?
One second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Actually, we'll move on to the hearings for 9:30, seven for 9:30 a.m.
So just as a reminder, we have a five-member board today. Applicants have the option to defer to a later date, hearing date to be heard by the full board. Sorry, Mr. Stenbridge.
That's quite all right, Madam Chair. We will start with case BOA 1, I'm sorry, are there any deferrals from the 9:30, to be requested for the 9:30 hearing?
Is that a hand raised, Mr. Trisco?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. The community meeting voting that was supposed to happen for my case, which I believe is the first one coming up, was suspended last month, so I will need a deferral the future...
So you're talking about 171 Brook Street?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So that was postponed until the 26th of this month.
Can you let Mr. Stenbridge read it into the record first?
No, I'm sorry.
That would be case BOA 146 3031, the address of 171 Brook Street. Go ahead, Mr. Trisco.
Yes, thank you. I am Gabriel Trisco of 171 Brook Street, and I will need a deferral. I'm sorry.
You mentioned, you started mentioning the reason?
Yes, exactly, sorry. The community, I presented in front of the Community Civic Association for Eagle Hill in East Boston, and the vote was supposed to happen a month after my presentation, which was two weeks ago. The meeting was postponed till July 26th, so I hope to have a vote by then, and then I will have to present again in front of this board. Thank you.
What's the next available for him, Javier?
That could be August 8.
Does that work for you?
That works.
Okay. Any questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to August 8, 2023.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. I'll see you then.
Thank you.
If there are any further requests for deferrals from the 9:30 hearings, we'll move on to case BOA 143 2247, the address of 67 Veer Street. Is the applicant and/or the representative present?
Good morning. Yes, this is Dennis Greenwood from Sousa Design Architects. I'm here on behalf of Fernando Delford Development. The proposed application is a extension of some of the gross floor area, this 444 square feet of space in the basement of an existing building that we currently have a permit for, but we're looking to finish out that space, which would put us over, which would add to an existing non-conforming FAR. So existing is a 3.82, with the added 444 square feet in the basement, that would put the proposed FAR at 4.43. There's no change in footprint or building height as part of this proposal. It's just to add finished area in the basement.
And what's the allowable FAR for this?
The allowable FAR is two.
Two, okay. And, sorry, just to understand, it's not a new dwelling unit, it's an extension of space in the current?
Correct, correct. So what's permitted now is, the building when, when Delford bought it was a five-unit building, one unit per floor. They reduced it down to a two-unit building. And part of that is that basement, so there's already some area down in the basement, but we're looking to finish the rest of it and give it back to that lower unit.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information on the community process. Our office held a butter's meeting on March 9. The applicant then went on to meet with the Beacon Hill Civic Association, which expressed non-opposition to this proposal. We're unaware of any concerns about their relief being sought. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Any other raised hands? Jessica?
No additional raised hands.
Great. With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve this project.
I'm sorry, with proviso, did you say?
Yes, with proviso, I'm sorry. I'm still asleep.
No worries. The proviso is no building code relief?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, that's okay. And can you add plans being submitted to Boston Landmark's Commission for Design Review? Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 144 0161, the address of ADG Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the owner-applicant, who is with us as well, Matt Ramey, and also on the call, the hearing is our architect, Gary Hendren. And before you today are the revised plans, which have been reviewed by the examiner, representing the scope of the project following changes made during the community review process. The proposal is to build an addition at the rear of an existing three-family. Right there is the photograph of the top of Thomas Park, Dorchester Heights in South Boston. The subject property is sort of diagonal across the street from the large green roof, which is the high school at the corner of G Street and Story. It's an existing three-family building, three stories in height, consistent with Thomas Park. It's a lovely historical Victorian-style building that is going to be preserved and restored by the owner as part of this project, and the addition is entirely at the rear of the property. Shown on the left is the ground floor plan. Because of the steep slope of the property along Story Street, the left-hand side of the drawing is Story Street, the front is G Street. Based on the slope of the land, we're able to tuck in some parking under the addition and the existing basement space for seven parking spaces. There will be three additional units in the addition at the rear, for a total of six units with seven parking spaces. There's an existing cinder block garage at the rear of the property currently that will be demolished to make room for the addition. I'll let Gary talk about the floor plans and the programming, but throughout this process, one thing that was very important to the community and to his proponents is that the addition is respectful of the existing historic character of the existing building, although Thomas Park is not technically a historic district. It is treated as such, and the approach to designing this addition was very much in keeping with the historic character of the surrounding neighborhood. I'll let Gary Hendren talk about the floor plans and the programming and architecture. Gary.
Great, thank you, Mark. Members of the board, this is a very simple planned addition. We've kept the each level, the ceiling heights of the existing building were quite adequate, first floor being over nine feet. So we've aligned the floors and we've matched flats at each level, so it's a three-story building. We've renovated the inside of the existing building with a new floor plan and new, obviously, kitchens and baths, and then aligned a unit directly behind it. We do have adequate space on the building site to do that. And with doing that, of course, we've added the two egress stairs, and we've added a new addition, just a little porch on the left side. There's an existing porch that we made the main entry to the building. As you go up the building, if you could, yeah, you'll see again matching units on the three floors as we go up, and they're very adequately sized, they're over 1,200, almost 1,200 square feet for a two-bedroom, with large master bedrooms and nice walk-in closets. So they're very, for buildings of today's design, these are very large units. If you scroll up to the elevations, you can see we've basically worked to be sympathetic with the existing architecture. We're matching the materials, we're matching the roof designs and the type of materials and the window patterns, so that we'll be restoring the front along G Street and the rear, like I said, will be very sympathetic and matching to the front in the architectural style. There are two roof decks, the upper units do have a private roof deck, which is more like a little widow's walk, but they're tucked in between the roof lines and not close to the edge of the building, so they're, they're just a space to enjoy fresh air without being intrusive to the street or to the neighborhood. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Can I ask how the extension aligns with other, with your neighbors as far as, you know, whether it's lined up, whether it then is jutting out more, et cetera?
Okay, to the, to the neighbor immediately to the, on G Street to the right, they've also done an addition to their building, and we are actually lower than their building. And to the neighbor behind us, the, the, this new addition is further away from the property line than the existing concrete garage that's there, and we have, again, spoken to the neighbor behind us in the community meeting, and we do step the building away and add some landscaping, so they're instead of looking at a blank concrete wall, they'd be looking at some landscaping, and we've kept the parking open at the lower level, so they actually have more relief than their current situation.
And, and Madam Chair, ADG Street, I'm sorry, AD2, right next door, did a similar addition into the backyard area that is actually longer than this proposal and higher by one story from this proposal.
So what are the number of units on either side, the 82 and the, I assume 78?
I think 82 is at least as large, six or more units. But then the other one that we're talking about is down here on Story Street. I don't know if you can see my pointer, but again, it's a, it's a corner building, so 82 is fronting on G Street, and that's the one with the large addition that extends further back and higher up than this proposal. And then on Story Street, the first house down is a single family, but it's down the steep slope, and as Gary mentioned, removal of the existing garage actually increases the degree of the setback for a structure from that property.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have, yes, I have one question. Will these be condos? Will these be condos or rental properties?
These are condominium for homeownership.
Okay.
Uh, is Ms., I think that's Mr. D'Amico, I was gonna ask if he was available to talk about the parking?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BPD. Can you scroll down to the parking design?
Down the left there, yeah.
Okay, yeah, space number three presents a problem because you would need 20 feet for that proper maneuverability. That doesn't even come close. So what BPD would like to recommend is space one and two be designed on a 60-degree angle. Even then, it's a little short from the required 36 feet to 34 feet, but since it's residential, I don't think two feet would be a big deal. But I recommend that space number three be removed because it's, it can't get out. Thank you.
Understood.
I'm sorry, is the applicant responding to that?
Yeah, I said understood.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Can the applicant talk more about the side yard setback? How that interacts with the sidewalk and maintaining ADA compliance?
Yeah, you'll see, some, I assume you're talking about the side yards setback with regards along the street?
Stories, Story Street, yeah.
Story Street. And we've put for ADA access, we come in off G Street, you can see where it says where the sidewalk comes in. And we've made everything, let's say, wide enough, but because of the slope and everything that we're dealing with, technically, we don't have to have wheelchair access to the building. But we have made all the hallways and everything compliant in terms of five feet wide and door swings. And of course, the sidewalk comes down at a fairly steep pitch, but that's the natural, that's the existing conditions of the public sidewalk. Across the front of G Street, of course, that is a public five-foot wide sidewalk.
And Ms. Weewell, this is not, Story Street is not one of those narrow half-streets, if you will, in South Boston. It's a regular full-size street with the full-size sidewalks, the whole distance of Story Street going down the hill, but it is a very steep hill.
Are, is the first floor unit ADA accessible? Or are your first floor units ADA accessible?
There's, there's not a ramp coming in. If there was an ADA person who decided to buy that, you don't have the, you could have the distance from G Street up into the landing along the left side of the building. So a ramp could be put in there and it would be ADA accessible.
Mr. Hampton, would you like to allow read on your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. To be honest with you, our recommendation is based on plans that we, that are dated April 7th of 2022. The elevations that were shown today, and knowing that these are revised plans, we didn't see them. The elevations are completely different from the ones that we made recommendations on. There was one less parking space shown in our plans. So where we're on the record is denying without prejudice because we think the additions excessive, the violations are excessive. We believe that the, the appellant has adequate use of the product. And Ms. Weewell, to your point, when we're talking about the sidewalks and we know, no, we're not implying that property owners give up, you know, any sort of square footage of their land to make any sidewalks five feet wide, right? So what we're concerned about is where there are narrow sidewalks, is that the setback be increased so there is no impediment within, right next to that sidewalk. So people don't put tables, chairs where it might be a problem. We're not saying that, of their land, obviously, that would be a taking and we wouldn't condone that. But, again, our recommendation is based on something, on plans that are completely different than what was shown to the board.
Madam Chair, may I respond to the BPDA recommendation?
Yes.
The original plans indeed were for a much larger structure, but as a result of the community review process, we removed an entire floor, removed decks at the rear of the property, added the one parking space by eliminating the elevator, so there were substantial changes made to the plans. On the sidewalk issue along Story Street, there would be no such impediment because there's an existing porch at the corner. And then going down the hill, there's, you know, there's, there's no opportunity for anything to be left on the sidewalk that would constitute any impairment of the existing sidewalk whatsoever. But again, I think this is one of those cases that might benefit from the newly adopted BPDA process for revised recommendations of the BPDA based on changes to the project. The changes were made following our Butters meeting, meeting with Dorchester Heights Neighborhood Association, and a meeting with Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, all of whom had specific recommendations, and all of which were incorporated into and adopted into the plans that are before the board today.
Mark, when were these plans dated?
Gary, I believe submitted these plans on June 22. And they were reviewed by Mr. D'Amato, I think just yesterday is the date stamp. But they were submitted in, Gary, when did you first submit them? The revised?
Oh, the, yeah, exactly, June 22nd.
After we completed our community process.
Right, we revised and resubmitted and waited for the review.
So, okay, so I just want to state, so you knew that there were going to be changes to the plans, and you waited until after the BPDA board date submitted? Because you probably knew that we were going to oppose this, correct? So, I agree with you, Mark, that, I agree with you, Mark, that the new process is gonna work a little better when you have changed plans. I just think it would have been beneficial to you to have, you know, a recommendation on the record that's better than what we have for you right now.
I think, yeah.
Understood.
Yeah, understood.
I can just put it, so let's, let's take public testimony now.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, our office hosted a Butters meeting on March 22. We heard a number of residents being concerned regarding the height. We understand that the applicant continue to work with those of Butters and also connect with the Dorchester Heights Association, the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, and share with them those plans. We received one letter in support and one letter in opposition, which we forwarded to the board last night. And with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam officials, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council Press and Flynn's office. The counselor would like to respectfully request additional community process for this proposal. He believes that there has been a good dialogue and work with both the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association and Dorchester Heights Association on a number of compromises, such as removing a floor, elevator, and addition of a parking spot. However, some neighbors and Butters have reached out or unaware of the status and details of the project. At this time, he'd like an additional meeting so that the community is on the same page and fully understands the proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Council Flynn's office, as well as the fact that the BPDA has expressed concerns regarding updated plans. Council would just like to request one deferral. Thank you.
Anne Marie Rojas, are you looking to give testimony here? So your hand is raised. Do we have anyone from any of those organizations mentioned, Gate of Heaven or Dorchester Heights? I don't see any raised hands. Oh, one second, it just popped up, one second. Anne Marie Rojas? One second, send in a request, are you looking to give testimony here? Anne Marie? Okay, who's, I'm sorry, Joseph Rojas? Go ahead.
Yes, good morning. I'm not a member of either of those organizations, but I am a resident and owner at AD2G Street of the abutting property. So when appropriate, I'd like to have, offer our thoughts as a organization.
Yes, please let us know if you are in support or opposition and briefly provide some reasoning.
I represent unit three, where I'm the owner. I also represent our condo association. All three of our units are in opposition of this plan. We mirror the concerns of some of the other councilors' offices that we have not seen or had an opportunity to review these new plans. I'd also like to respond to a couple of the comments that were made about our building, which I think are inaccurate or being misrepresented to the board. It was stated that our building is actually, was made higher when it was renovated in 2015. But it was not made higher with an entirely new level in the entire footprint of the building. Only one portion of the fourth floor, only a fourth floor is added to only a portion of the footprint of the property. The rest is a roof deck, so it's inaccurate to say that an entire level was added to our building. Also noting that, that we have the open space in the back. However, our back area is a parking lot that has three parking spaces for the three units. But prior to the renovation, did have a barn in the back, so there was a higher structure back there. So anything that was added to our building was in, with the knowledge that that barn was there, however, was removed to create more open space on our entire lot. Third, I'd just like to say that I disagree with the representation of the sidewalks on Story Street. I think that they are particularly narrow. It is a one-way street with a single lane, and the sidewalks are particularly narrow right next to this building. So even if the retaining wall is maintained as it exists, that sidewalk is particularly narrow.
Thank you, Ms. Rojas. I see, I see someone from Gate of Heaven, I'd like to just give them an opportunity to speak. Is Mr. Lally on? Can you raise your hand? I don't. You said Lally? It says, Mr. Newman wrote it, Kevin Lally? Yeah, go ahead, Kevin, I sent a request to unmute you.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin. Please to name and address and briefly tell us if you are in support or opposition.
My name is Kevin Lally, Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. We did, we are supporting this project, they did reduce the thing, but I am concerned if they have submitted new plans since our meeting. I'd like to see those plans, if they have submitted new plans before we give a final judgment on it.
Thank you.
To Mr. Lally, the new plans that are before this board are the boards that we presented to the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association. Following that meeting is when we submitted them to ISD, having completed the community review process. So there are no plans that you have not seen, Kevin.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Mr., I don't know if Bob, Mr. D'Amico had his hand up again, or if that was just from a previous hands-up?
Madam Chair, I apologize, I forgot to mute myself.
Okay, no worries. Okay, so here are no other questions from the board. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I have a question more process. If we were to vote to defer, would BPDA have a second chance to review the plans?
Mr. Hampton? Good question. Mr. Hampton?
Not after, well, if they were submitted now, we weren't granted the authority. Our board made this, approved this recommendation. So I don't know whether or not we can do that, since it's something that, you know, you only get one bite of the apple under the old process. That's something that I would have to check with people.
And can you confirm, I thought, to everybody's point, that you were updating your process? Has that not been approved yet?
It has, it was approved by our board at the last board meeting.
Okay, but where you are?
So we don't need board approval anymore, there will be rolling recommendations coming through instead of the possibility of that 30 days and be completed.
Okay, but that's moving forward and not with prior?
Moving forward right now, that's the process right now.
Yeah, it may not be retroactive, I am.
May not be, I don't wanna.
Well, or I guess maybe the question is, can we request BPDA review again?
I think you can request whatever you want.
Well, then, I think, I think that answers the question, Ms. Weewell.
Okay, we'll stop there.
So if that helps you, the motion, then let's.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion to actually deny without prejudice. I, we received the plans last night, I don't feel like I've had adequate time to review the plans in depth, especially since they've changed. The number of spaces exceeds the number of units, that's also another reason why I'm making this motion. And I've heard Mr. D'Amico's comments on maneuverability, I think overall, there's just more work to be done. So I'd like some changes to be made and to see those back before us.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1465219, with the address of 133 West Conference Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes.
Can you state your name and address for the record and box group?
My name is Ted Steckel, my address is 2 Lantern Lane, Winchester, Massachusetts, with Steckel Construction. We also have Laurel Sagan, the owner of the building or the unit, present. Laurel, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me? Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. We are proposing to remove, as you can see, remove our rear deck, enclose that space, and add a deck on top. The third portion of our purpose is working on the front of our unit, is not on the table, we're not doing that. So all the roof is going to be proposed, is being done on the alley backside of our space. We have, and this will be aligned, I know somebody else, someone had mentioned about one of the previous requests, that this will be aligned and our Butters and what's going on up in our alley. Meeting, and we have also, neighborhood meeting, and we've also received approval from the Southeast Historical Commission. And our building format is pending on this discussion and potential approval.
Got it, and just to confirm, you mean South End Historical Commission?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Ted, you want to add?
Nope, that's accurate.
Great. Any questions from the board? Okay, here are none, I'll take public testimony.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, King Creasy Shelley from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. An Butters meeting was held on May 10th, where no opposition was shown by Butters, and the applicant addressed all questions and concerns. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other raised hands? I have no other raised hands at the moment. With that, may I have a motion?
Like to make a motion to approve?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA 1431696, with the address of 112 Sawyer Avenue. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Name and Earl Raymond of Design Development Consultants. 112 Sawyer Street. Is, you can see, we completed 110 Sawyer Street, now we're on the 112 Sawyer Street. Both these buildings are pretty chewed up, gut rehab, new bathrooms, kitchens, the whole gamut. Gut rehab, new bathrooms, kitchens, the whole gamut that you see there. So 110 is completed. 112 is the next thing that we're talking about now of new kitchens, new baths, including rear decks, also a deck up on the roof that's there. And the other thing we include is we have a nice landscaped yard that sort of gives people some open space in the back, because this is a pretty tight neighborhood with all the triple deckers and everything. Each unit has three bedrooms and two bathrooms on it. The basement will have storage units for each one of the units, because everyone brings a lot of stuff that you have to remove. But it's, the new owners, they've moved in, they're very happy. We just need to move on to the next building and complete that. And, and, and we had several meetings with the neighborhood folks and everything wanting to see that building completed.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. My name is Ashley Holmes from the Neighborhood Office of Neighborhood Services. 112 Sawyer did, we did hold an abutters meeting for 112 Sawyer Ave. on March 23rd. Abutters did not, offices did show their support. They did present to the local civic group as well, which was Jonesville Civic Association. They presented on May 10th, which went very well. The civic associations showed their support with a letter. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker's office, we're late to go on record in support of the applicant.
Thank you. And I have no raised hands at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second with a proviso that the plans be submitted to BPDA for design review with attention to location and design of the roof deck.
Do you accept that proviso, Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA 1391838 with the address of 18R Plain Street. Is the applicant and the representative present?
Yes. Hello?
Yes, can you, may I ask you by yourself? Yep.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. My name is David Higgins with an address of 12R Plain Street in Dorchester, Mass. I'm seeking approval today for 18R Plain, Plain Street. If we could just go to the elevations of the, of the, of the plan before we, we would get into the, to the ticket things. Madam Ambassador, that'd be great. Here we go. The top one, yeah. So in, in our design, in our design, we, we think that we'd like to put a type of a barn look on this, because it is actually at the rear of similar properties. So that's the main style. Again, if it's approved, you know, hopefully it's approved and we can maybe get BPDA design review and maybe make some changes. Over the course of two, two, two meetings, two plus meetings with the neighborhood, we changed a dormer, which you see on the front, was originally on the back. And, and we've been talking to the neighbors, the rear, they suggested that maybe could remove the dormer. So actually, it looks better and it's, it's actually south facing. So it was a good idea and we moved the dormer to the front. If we could go to the floor plans, Madam Ambassador, we just walk through that before we go to the site plan. As you can see, Madam Chair, members of the board, we walk in the front door, there's a kitchen living room. To the right, there's a, there's, you walk in the door, there's a living room. And to the right, there's a, there's a kitchen living room. And then you walk up the stairs, there's, there's three bedrooms, two, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, and there's a bonus room on the third floor. It's approximately 1,950 square feet. We have a, we will have an eight-foot basement for storage. If you'd like to go to the site, site, the site plan, Madam Ambassador, we'll, we'll just talk through that and talk through the violations. Site plan number one. Yes, that's it. Yep. Thank you, Madam Ambassador. So this particular house is 18R Plain Street, which is at the, the top right-hand corner. This, this subdivision site plan is approximately 8,860 square feet for number 18R Plains. I purchased this property in 2017 and I built, as of right, the three houses, the three single families that you see in front over the last, the last two to three years. Number 12, which you see up on the top left-hand side, is number 12R, where I will reside myself and I'm seeking approval for 18R, which is on the, on the very right-hand corner. Just to talk of the violations, the side yard setback is 10 feet. I'm, I'm 10 feet from the lot line on, on the right-hand side. The way the lot line has been spilt up on the left-hand side, it shows only like four feet, but that line is actually goes through to the original lot line, which is like 16 feet. So I'm actually about 16 feet from the left-hand side. And the rear, the rear yard setback is 25 feet. I have 20 feet. There's a nice back garden in, in this particular property. It works, the nice single family. The closest house to me is over 30 feet. So it's, it's appropriate. It fits. I have a good vision. I think a single family here would be very appropriate. And, and, you know, I'm moving forward with these single families, because for one of many reasons, but to see young people, young kids playing on the streets again is a beautiful thing. So, you know, with the, with the three single families are built out front, the people are on, the kids are on the street. It's a wonderful thing. If you would like to go to this, the number two site plan, just to, I kind of show you my vision, Madam Chair, members of the board. Down the road, this is what I, this is, this is the, these are all the properties that I, that I own. So down the road, this is where I kind of see this thing going, at least, you know, there's always green, green space in the middle, it's like gives it, gives the site some breathing area. The total site, the total square footage of this site is almost 36,000 square feet. And, you know, this, again, I think this thing, this, this home works here. It's a new single family. We, we need them in the city, especially in Dorchester, in this area where there's multiple single families. I have, I do have a number of two families to the, to the, to the, to the left of me and, and some two families behind me. So with that, I'll, I'll, I'll pass it over to the board for any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? There are. I just want to, it looks like we just received some letters of support, but we also have quite a number of letters of opposition. So I just, I just want you to speak a little bit to the issue around parking and just clarify for us the units, other units that you're referring to that you felt, because one, one person noted, there are supposed to be one families, but there are not. So I just want to understand what, what's, what's the context? What's around you?
Sure, yeah. No, the, the families, the families, I built them units, the units in the front, the single families in the front, they were all as of right. And they're all single families. The three, the three units, as you see there on, on, on Plain Street, they're single families and, and people are living in them. And, and then the, the 12R Plains Street, which I've just finished up, which was approved by the board, maybe like a year ago, year and a half ago. I'm in the process of just finishing that and I, and I intend to move into that myself. Again, they're single families, signed off by the, by the building department, they're single families, and that's, that's what's living, that's what's living in them, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I have public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. To back information on the community process, our office held two abutters meetings. The first one on January 5th, 2023, and the second one was held on May 3rd. Regarding the, the one on May 3rd, a number of residents in attendance expressed opposition to this proposal or were critical. As the board mentioned, we have received letters of opposition, four letters of opposition most recently, and also letters in support from four households nearby. We understand that they did connect with the civic group, but we do not have any information on file of civic taking any stance. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker's office, we're in opposition today, Madam Chair. Many of the abutters have expressed opposition to the project. They originally had a discussion regarding 12 rare, and the, the abutters all agreed that, okay, if that was the last building that you planned to do on the site, we'll support it. Now we're back having another iteration on this site. So we're in opposition today. And again, many of the abutters are in opposition as well. Thank you.
I have a few raised hands. I'll start with Mark Lynch and then Dr. Yasmin. Mark, can you briefly tell us, give us your name, address, and tell us if you are in support or opposition?
Yes, good morning, members of the board, and Madam Ambassador. My name is Mark Lynch. I live in Tannenbaum Street in Dorchester. I've been a lifelong resident in Dorchester. I'm not familiar with the specifics or mildly familiar with the specific of, of this submission. What I would like to briefly speak about is David Higgins' reputation and his ability to bring quality housing to--
Are you speaking in support or opposition of this project?
I'm speaking in support.
Okay. Okay, so can you speak to this project?
Yes. Well, I, I simply support David in this effort to bring good housing to the area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Yasmin Gay? You looking to get testimony here? Go ahead.
Yes. Good morning. I'm so sorry. I don't have my camera on, but--
Oh, you're fine. Can you, okay. Let's briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition.
Yes. My name is Dr. Yasmin Gay. I'm at 20 Plain Street in Dorchester. I'm the tenant of David Higgins. I am in total support of David Higgins. I am an assistant superintendent for the Office of Opportunity Gaps with Boston Public Schools. I am new to Boston. I came to Boston almost two years ago looking for housing. And we all know how difficult it is to find housing in Boston. And I found this wonderful house. David Higgins is a phenomenal landlord, who is a landlord that not only just creates buildings, but he also builds community. Myself and my two children are very happy being there. So total support.
Thank you.
Okay, Julian? And then Suzanne? Nothing from Julian?
Hello?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Hi, hi, good morning. I'm Julian Callahan. I live on Oakton Ave. I'm an abutter to this property. I am in complete opposition for a number of reasons, but mainly, as someone mentioned before, when Mr. Higgins was presenting 12 Plain Street, we were told that there would be no more building and that he believed green space was important and this space would be green space. And here we are, a year later, with housing being proposed, which he flat out said he was done with building housing after 12R.
Okay, thank you. Suzanne?
Hi, good morning, everyone. Yes, my husband, I, we live at 3133 Rosaria Street. My husband, Martin, who unfortunately could not make the call this morning, we are vehemently opposed to this new build. A lot of the reasons, as everyone else has said, with, that there were, you know, we promised there was not to be new building. Also, there have just been so many, so many things that he, that he has done to not, I, I don't, I don't trust what he does. And it's just been by his actions that we feel that way. But I think that this house would also be directly behind the fence to my home. And I, that is just not how our neighborhood, it, it doesn't make sense for our neighborhood, nothing. We don't have any of that type of build. And we'd like to keep our neighborhood the way it is and the way it looks. And we are opposed to it.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Higgins, can you just speak to, you know, I'm looking at Google Maps and it does not appear that anything in the immediate area has housing in the rear. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, well, I think number 12 Plain Street has, has--
Well, that's yours.
Correct, yes.
That's not anything other than yours.
Could, could, actually, there, it, there is one or two all up right now, but they're actually on streets. It's, Madam Chair, I, I refer to the size of, size of the lot that I have here, which is, which is, if you look on Google Maps, you can see it's, the, the lot is like five times, well, maybe not five times, but at least four times the size of, of any lots. The average lot in this area is like about 4,200 square feet, and they have two families on them. My lot is, is, you know, really combined with two lots is almost 30, 35 plus a square feet. If you look, if you look at that site plan, you see all, they're all two families that are all directly behind me. And then, you know, so, so there are two families that are behind me, and the closest house is, is 30 feet from me. And I would also like to, like to mention, which I actually forgot to mention in the, in the, in the presentation, that we, we're proposing in this single family that we go geothermal, which we will not need gas, and it reduces our carbon footprint, which is the, the, the President Administration in favor. So, you know, again, it helps, it will help as well, and, you know, hopefully we can get more people to, to start doing it. But this geothermal, which, which brings the cool air into the ground and, and warm air up.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Are there, are there additional questions from the board? I can't see the board right now. Are there additional questions from, no? Okay. Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion to approve the proviso of BPDA design review.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Okay, well, the, the chair's vote is irrelevant, but the chair, the chair votes no. The motion does not carry.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. If there's another motion, there, the board can also submit one for a doo-wop or a deferral if they think it's adequate, or it'll be a straight trial at this point.
Is there an alternative motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to deny without prejudice.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes, but not let it add.
I, I would say, okay, is there, well, there's only a couple of other motions to be made, so either we'll try one more motion.
Well, I mean, like, without, without prejudice, we'd have to work, or we'd just have, right?
I'm sorry?
If we don't deny, if we don't do denial without prejudice, we're just stuck, I guess.
It would be denied, or you can defer if you wish to pull more, the--
Yeah, we don't have to continue, we don't have to keep motioning. But, but as Javier says, it will, it will just be straight up, it will be denied then. Okay, well, I'm gonna--
If we deny, then we can move to an ice case, Madam Chair.
And if we didn't, straight deny, they cannot come back with a similar project, is that correct?
They can't come back with the same project.
Same project.
They could, but they would have to wait for one year before they--
Okay.
Did I make a motion to defer?
I'll second.
We can all do whatever we like. Let's try again. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
I know, that was painful, Ms. Weewell. I know, that was painful, Ms. Weewell.
Then I'll support to defer, just, you know, maybe with all seven of us that we may have more information or something.
I will, I will go with the deferral, but I hope in the meantime, it sounds like it would be helpful if the developer did a little more dialoguing with his neighbors. Thank you. Next case?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Sorry, go ahead.
September 12.
To when?
September 12, yeah.
Okay, well, hopefully that's sufficient time for more community dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1450981, with the address being 5 L-1 Road. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes.
Okay, can you identify yourself and your address and speak to the project?
My name is Ivan Cruz. Project is at 5 L-1 Road, Dorchester, Mass. 02124. And Chair.
Okay, can you walk us through what you're requesting?
Is, is the architect there?
Who is your architect?
Lenny from CEC.
I don't know, do you see anyone? Yes, yep, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I definitely made you a panelist, so once you become a panelist, please unmute yourself. You're on mute if you're speaking. Hi, who's speaking on behalf of this case? Mr. Cruz, are you able to speak to this project?
You want me to speak to him, you mean?
Oh, no, go ahead. Are you able to talk us through the project?
I can talk, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, I can.
I'm sorry, I'm at, uh. Ren Blue Fire, Estable Environment, Estillones, 8 Oak Street, Pevydy, Mass. Representing Mr. Cruz, who lives at 7 L-1 Road. He is proposing to build a two-family dwelling on a pre-existing undersized lot. The, the house is, the lot is only, is in a 3D at 6,000 zone, but it's only 2,641 square feet. And it is a skinny lot of only 36 feet wide when the lot, the unit requirement is 50. So we're utilizing articles and astrology. Utilizing articles 19 date and 20 date for a reduced setback. Originally, the lot was, you know, had a three-family on it way back. Built down probably in the 1950s and has been empty since. Mr. Cruz is planning on moving into the lower apartment and is going to rent out the upper floor to a secondary person. So. We're, we're proposing, we'll pull back to the original one, the proposed.
Will there be any parking on this?
There will be parking in the rear, right at the moment. We're proposing just one, one space and a few, some people might, may park on the side in the driveway, but if that's still up in there, there's enough space for two cars in the back to park. It'd be a pride, but it's, it's doable.
Okay.
I don't even have any, the house that was on there is, was, the same building that was on 7 L-1 Street and also several other houses on L-1 Street. Looking at the original street layout, seven houses in that area where we got same building, one more. This dwelling is significantly smaller than those buildings. Even though the lot sizes, but further on, powered part the same size as 5 L-1 Street. We're just proposing a basic structure with, powered in the front, which, I didn't have the, you have the older elevation plans up.
Okay.
I can share and get the new ones.
Okay, well, can I, I'm just gonna take a raised hand from Bob just so we can address the parking issue, if that's what you're raising on.
Yes, Madam Chair, Bob D'Amico, BTD. I see no parking reflected on the plans at all. And I think that's important because I don't know where they're going. And I have to sort of judge whether there's sufficient maneuverability and the curb cut is not aligned properly. So I'd like to see the actual parking reflected on the plans because it's a little tight and I just want to make sure everything is okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's still there.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. And I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ashley Holmes here from the Neighbor's Offices, Neighborhood Services. 5 L-1 Road, the city did host an abutters meeting back in April. No, no attendance of abutters in that day. The project was presented in front of Greater, the Greater Chamber of Neighborhood Association. The association did show their support into this project, but that would defer. The board at this time, thank you very much.
Good. No, no additional raised hands. Okay.
I have my hand raised as well.
Sorry, I, who's that?
I O from Council Row's office.
Oh, go ahead, yes, you're all set.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Iamidillan Weel with the Office of City Council, Grand Rowell. In regards to 5 L-1 Road, we had no letters of opposition and the applicant went west of Washington Coalition and got their support. But as the BTD officer raised, there was also concerns of parking and a solution was suggested by using, utilizing the nearby CBS parking lot. Other than that, the council would like to go on record and support the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands at the moment. Okay, so I think the only maybe outstanding question relates to the parking. With that, may I have a?
Can I, can I say something?
Oh, okay, sir.
Okay, so basically like the gentleman was saying, CBS does let us park on the side towards, towards the back of my other house, L-1 Road. They have, I think, what we could park. A lot of, a lot of us park there now. Well, there's not too many houses on the street, but a couple of us, like seven.
May I ask, do you have an actual, like, written agreement? What form or is this some sort of?
Not, they just let us park.
Okay, well, so, so the only question here is related to the comment around including a parking space and Mr. D'Amico just requested plans so that he could see other options.
Yeah, and right now I submitted a drawing to be able to do a curb cut and park in the back of 7 L-1.
I'm sorry, are you saying that this project, you're now requesting a curb cut that was not included in your request or what are you?
This is, this is separate, this is for the other.
Okay, so don't bring up a separate, we're trying to, 5 L-1, thank you.
Okay.
So, so with that, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to know what would happen if CBS no longer let them park there anymore?
Righto. That's for that.
Well, for me, well, we have parking in front as well. We have parking in, in Park Street as well.
Okay, so you mean street parking?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Ever since CBS, CBS has been there quite a few years, I mean, and they always made it.
Thank, are there any other questions from the board?
One, again, Madam Chair, so there will be no parking on the, on 5 L-1 Street as, as it stands?
Well, I, I, what, I would encourage someone to include some sort of BTD review to, to figure that part out.
Good suggestion.
With that, are we comfortable making a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve with BPDA designer view as well as BTD review for parking.
May I have a second?
A second.
If you, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1441300. The address being 90 to 92 Noel Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, I'm here.
And I am too.
All right, can you identify yourself and proceed with the project?
Sure. Hello, everybody. My name is Ariel Child from 90 to 92 Noel Street in Rosendale, Mass. I'm here with Brooke Childs, who is my sister, who also owns the home duplex. And we are joined by Nick Ruggeri, our architect, and Eric Santos, our contractor from Arcs and Homes and Recreation. So we are all here on the Zoom. Again, Brooke and I are sisters. We bought this duplex together with our families in 2017. And the work we are proposing to do is what we really feel is necessary for making this our shared forever home. When we moved in in 2017, the home already had a finished basement, which is half of my family's living space. But the previous owners did not do this work properly to code. And we haven't been able to utilize the space as we would like to for our family. So we are proposing to redo this space so we can expand our living area in the ways that we intended to when we first bought the home and the ways that we need to, to stay and to bring the building standards up to code where they should be. Additionally, in order to do that work appropriately, we need to move a couple of staircases within the home, which is why we now need a new second stairway coming down from the upper porch where my sister's family lives so they can maintain their access to our shared backyard. We presented this project to the Longfellow Area Neighborhood Association and received unanimous support. And we have incredibly close relationships with our neighbors who are eager for this work to happen so that we can put our roots down here long term. Happy to answer questions or take comments.
Thank you, Ms. Childs. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Diana Bronchuk from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we defer judgment to the board. The owners filed for a two-week comment period and presented to the Longfellow Area Neighborhood Association on May 8. The Neighborhood Association voted for no oppositions. We have not received any other statements.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? It looks like I have no additional raised hands at the moment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. I've received no opposition to this project of the Council to go record and support.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, since we have eight minutes to.
Yes, sir. Shall we take a break then?
Yes.
All righty, let's reconvene at eight, 11, sorry.
Thank you.
In the meantime, if anyone is in the attendee section right now and you need to be elevated to a panelist, please raise your hand or send me a message in the chat so we can get you to the.
please raise your hand or send me a message in the chat so we can get you to the...
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, quick roll call. Mr. Stembridge?
Pardon?
Mr. Shepherd? Mr. Langham?
Present.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Stembridge.
We begin with the hearings scheduled for 11:00 a.m. At this point, Madam Chair, should we provide a little bit of our...
Yes, please. As a reminder, we have a five-member board today. Applicants have the option to defer to a later hearing date to be heard by the full board.
So with that, if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals at this time, let us know please.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
1-3 Elmwood Street?
Okay, that would be case BOA 1319563, with the address being 1-3 Elmwood Street. Would you care to let us know, give some background?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. Attorney for the proponents, Triple W Development, which is Scott Webster, Shawn Webster, and Joe Webster, at 1-3 Elmwood Street. Based on the five-member board status, we would request an administrative deferral at this time.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the next available date would be July 25.
Is that acceptable, Mr. Lacasse?
Yes.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to July 25.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also.
Thank you kindly.
Any more requests for withdrawals or deferrals?
Madam Chair, it's Attorney Richard Linds. I actually have 2-304 Paris Street.
Okay. That's the first case, Mr. Stembridge.
That would be case BOA 1475285, with the address of 304 Paris Street. Would you care to inform us why?
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linds, business address of 245 Subber Street in Boston, on behalf of petitioner, requesting administrative deferral for the full board.
Thank you. Ms. Javier?
Yes, this is July 25th as well.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to July 25.
May I have a second?
One second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. See you then.
Thank you. And the other one I have is a 94 Morris Street.
Madam Chair, that's at 11:30, I believe.
Oh, my apologies. Yes, I'll wait. Count that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other deferrals or withdrawals? Back to you, Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, we have case BOA. We have three companion cases. Case BOA 1444979, with the address of 1 Fourth Street Place. With that, we have case BOA 1475322, with the address being 2 Fourth Street Place. And with those two, we have case BOA 1464137, with the address being 3 Fourth Place. Is the applicant and/or their representative present? May we hear from them, please?
Mr. Stanley or his representative here?
Is that you caller, 617436? Okay, I see it. James? Okay, not sure.
I think this is Nick Landry, I'm the architect. I think that's James Rutter, who's calling in. He's the attorney.
Okay, James, I'm sending a request to make you a panelist. Just accept that once it pops up on your screen. Go ahead, you're unmuted.
I'm off the air.
Go ahead, are you giving the presentation for this hearing?
No, no, I'm on the bar.
Oh, okay. Okay. Mr. Landry, do you know if anyone else is present to speak on this?
Is it Kevin Lally?
No, it's not Kevin Lally. It was James Rutter.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Rutter, and I apologize for my difficulty in logging on. I represent the applicant on each of these three appeals. And this is a classic example of why a variance would be appropriate because, as we've shown in our submittal, these lots are sort of rather unique in the city of Boston in that they were laid out in 1912. However, they're 70 feet through a public way, and the only access is by an alleyway that's seven feet wide. On each of these, one of the alleged violations is the fire code refusal for access. And in order to ameliorate that, we are proposing that in each instance, we will sprinkle the buildings. Each one of these is an existing single-family home owned by either a long-term resident or a long-term resident in the community. For example, 1 Fourth Street Place is owned by a woman who's lived there for 10 years. 2 has been a family home for 50 years. And then 3, the one on the immediate left, has recently been purchased but by members of the South Boston community who've lived there since 2007. As you can see from the elevations, these are a mansard design with the second floor that slopes in and then ultimately goes to a peaked roof. The proposal is to straighten out the second floor facade so that it doesn't slope in, and then change the peaked roof into a flat roof. The scope of construction on each of these buildings is only approximately 19 by 20 feet. One of the alleged violations, at least as to 1 Fourth Street Place, is maximum height on parcel exceeded, which I sort of can't figure out because this is MFR, and the maximum height is 40 feet, and we're only proposing to go to 33 feet, which is three feet higher than the existing elevation. In each instance, there are two bedrooms on the second floor, and the plan for the third floor has been to create a primary bed and bath and dressing area. The idea here is to bring these dated buildings up to kind of current standards to accommodate home offices and/or additional space that the mansard and the uninhabitable attic wouldn't permit. This board has authority, again, to grant relief because, again, particularly these lots are owing to circumstances relating to shape, topography. It's unique to this district. The literal enforcement would make these, you know, prevent these properties from being in their house, in their best, highest best use, which is the single-family homes. We're not looking to increase occupancy. And the desirable relief can be granted, especially where the applicants in each instance are proposing to address at least some of the potential public safety hazards with sprinkling. Now, we participate in the community process, and we anticipate some opposition. However, as part of that, at least as to 3 Fourth Street Place, the original proposal had outdoor space on the roof of the second floor. But as part of the community process, in order to address some of the immediate butter's concerns, we've agreed to eliminate that as part of the project. So at this point, what we're talking about is about 20 by 20 construction on the third floor, a third floor that already exists on each building, raising the height only an additional three feet in each instance to permit the construction of a bedroom and bath and dining area. Are there any questions from the board?
Can you clarify what's going on in the lower levels? You mentioned a lower addition as well.
No. Well, at least as to... So if you look at the plans, you'll see that 1...
Where do you want this floor to...
There's nothing going on outside the existing footprints.
Okay.
1 Fourth Street Place is the smallest of the building and the smallest of the three, and it doesn't have any rear yard addition on it. It looks to be about 31 feet from the rear lot line. 2 Fourth Street Place had previously, in some prior time, had an addition that extended that structure out about 10 feet. And then 3 Fourth Street Place has already erected an addition pursuant that was as of right. One of the immediate butters behind each of these, I would expect, I mean, based on their opposition in the community process, I would just point out that the construction that goes on is at least 25 feet from their lot line. And the actual construction is probably 30 feet when you think that all we're doing is an addition on the... raising the mansard on the front, back, and sides, and then squaring off the attic.
Okay, I'm sorry. I may have missed this. What did you say is going on the lower level? So one of the properties mentions a lower addition. So that's my only question.
No, the... Okay, so my... I'm sorry, Madam Chair. The footprint of all three of these buildings is slightly different.
Neither of them.
1 has the smallest of the footprints, and nothing is going on on the lower level. 2 Fourth Street Place, a rear yard addition. And so it is approximately 10 feet deeper than 1. 3 Fourth Street Place has the same 10-foot addition, and it goes up two floors. And it's on that second-floor flat roof area that we had originally proposed to have a deck. As part of the community process, we agreed to eliminate that.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
There were some concerns, and they can be addressed, about fire safety protection. And in terms of your construction, would there be sprinklers that were put in the building or something along those lines?
Yes, and that could be a proviso if relief is granted, that we'll sprinkle each of the buildings.
Sorry.
May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. Our office hosted a butters meeting on March 23 of 2023. During that meeting, we heard from a number of residents concerns and opposition to the proposal. Some that you've heard from the applicant's representation, concerns regarding would fire trucks be able to access through the tight alleyway these buildings, and that building up more than increased the risk of a fire hazard for the neighborhood. Concerns regarding noise that would occur in the backyard. And if these decks remained as a part of the proposal, as well as just the increase of height impacting setbacks from neighboring buildings and impacting shadows falling on those addresses. The applicant then went on to meet with the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, which Mr. Lally is on, so I'll let him speak to that, but I live there in opposition. And I think we've forwarded the letters we've received to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Callero from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition based on feedback from neighbors and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, all of whom express concerns on Bank City and the difficulty of first responders to get down 4th Street Place in the event of an emergency. Thank you.
Christina, are you looking to get someone to hear?
Madam... Sorry. Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of Council Flynn's office, I'm still in right there opposition.
Okay. I have no additional raised hands.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may address some of those criticisms?
I think this phone caller is also trying to speak and support our opposition. Can we just have testimony completed first? Hello?
Madam Chair, it's Kevin Lally from the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association.
Yes.
We are in opposition to this. A couple of stats is that 3 Fourth Street Place just added a complete two-second, second-floor addition in the back. So the added space, I'm not sure if they want. Mr. Stanley at 2 Fourth Street Place, his biggest concern is he has one roommate, and he wants to put another roommate in to add an additional roommate, basically turning into almost like a rooming house and everything. So we are in opposition. Also, we are very concerned, even with the sprinkler system, many fires start within the walls, which are already well underway before a sprinkler system would kick in. And the inability of fire apparatus to get down that way would be very dangerous to the neighborhood, so we rise in opposition.
Thank you. Christina?
Hi, my name is Christina Sykes. I'm in direct at Butter, 2-3 Fourth Street Place. I had sent a letter of opposition in. Again, to reiterate what some of the other people have said, fire safety is a big concern. Also, for me, you know, I've gotten a lot of sunlight reduction from the existing extension that 3 Fourth Street Place has put on. One of the reasons I bought this house was the access to a yard with sunlight. I grow a lot of food and plants, and gardening is a big activity of mine. I think this roof extension will further decrease my sunlight, which is going to negatively affect my property value and the enjoyment of the property for which I bought it. Also, this is, you know, not creating any additional affordable housing or anything. It's just people want more space. But...
All right, I have no additional raised hands.
Okay, can the applicant speak to what additions have already taken place? Because people are talking about additions that have already occurred.
Okay, so 3 has a two-story addition in the back that mirrors that of 2. That was erected as of right, and it shows up on our plans. And it's in that flat roof section that we had originally, as part of this application, proposed putting a roof deck. As part of the community process, when we heard of the neighbors' concerns about the potential for noise or disruption from that, we agreed to eliminate the roof deck on the second floor over the... second floor, over the, the, the second floor addition as to three. The Stanley House in the middle is a single-family home, it's not a rooming house, there's no intention to try to turn it into a rooming house. You can see that it has two small bedrooms on the second floor, and the plan is to have a primary bedroom on the third floor. As far as the criticism that we heard from some of our public officials, that the fire access, nothing, I mean, we're actually improving life safety by this proposal, by taking houses that were built probably in about 1880 and bringing them up to the current building standards, and then in addition to that, adding life safety features that were we not to do anything, that wouldn't be, wouldn't be required. But as a condition, and again, of this board's consideration of these applications, we're proposing that we will, while we can't address the access issue, we can address the fire safety issue by adding these sprinklers. Lastly, as far as one of the callers spoke about shadows, and we submitted for the board's consideration a shadow study, and I think that that, that neighbor has a tree in their backyard, and so naturally, when the leaves are out, there's going to be more shadows. And the shadow studies that we submitted show that the three feet of additional height aren't going to create any appreciable greater shadows. So...
I think that's a bit misleading, frankly.
Thank you. Sorry, we're not, we're just letting the applicant respond at this point. Are you, are you done, sir?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Can't see the board, are there? Okay, hearing none, does BPDA have a recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeffy has a BPDA. We recommend that no building code relief be granted, and that plan is being submitted to us for the design review to minimize the visibility of the...
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion? There's only five of us, somebody needs to make a motion.
I'm trying to make a motion for approval with the proviso of a BPDA design review, and also no building code relief be granted.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Could we add to that the provision for, with five, to make sure that the sprinkler is going? Yes.
Okay, with that, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA 1269163, with the address of 734 to 742 Dudley Street. Is the applicant, it's also an Article 80 case, project, is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Vujini on behalf of the applicant, with the business address to 10th floor of Road and Braintree. With me this afternoon, we have the developer Val DePina, the team architect Arkan Siddiqu, and Mylan, who is a permanent consultant. 734 Dudley Street, the zoning in this neighborhood is neighborhood shopping, the lot size is just under 7,000, it's 6956. The proposal is to build a six-story building with 25 residential units, a roof deck, and three commercial spaces on the first floor, together with five parking spaces. As far as violations, we had an FAR, a rear yard height, open space, and parking. The unit sizes, there will be five one-beds that average 570 square feet, 10 two-beds that average 900 square feet, and 10 three-beds that average 997 square feet. As I stated, this is an Article 80 proposal that went through two complete Article 80 processes. In 2017, the BPDA approved a five-story, 20-unit building with 10 parking spaces and three commercial retail spaces. That development also was approved by the zoning board with PEO. In January of this year, a smart project review notice of project change was filed to increase the building to six stories with 25 units and five off-street parking spaces. The parking went down as a result of the BPDA planners felt the addition of a bike room, with 25 spaces was important as this is a TOD development. Previously, this proposal caused for three affordable units, which calculated at 15%. Through the notice of project change, the proposal adds another additional unit, so that brings the percentage up to 16%. Those affordable units, we have one one-bed at 70% AMI, two two-beds at 70% AMI, and one three-bed at 77, 70%, excuse me, AMI. We went through a lengthy community process. We have support from the Wendover Street Civic Association, Representative Liz Miranda, Councilor Tanya Anderson, and also Councilor Frank Baker. It's important to note that these developers are from this neighborhood, building in their neighborhood. At this point, I'll turn it over to the team architect to walk you guys through the plans. Arkan? I don't know if you may be unmuted.
Yeah, go ahead, Arkan, I just sent a question.
All right, I hope everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this is our building. We have gone through a process of redesign with the BPDA staff and through the community process, getting feedback from everybody. I'd just like to go through all the, all the slides one by one. So this is our, good stop just at this exterior view. So this is the view on Dudley Street. We are presenting on the street with the first story. We have three small tenant spaces, and the rest of the levels are all residential units. We are proposing to use concrete masonry unit, architectural grade for the first two levels, and the combination of fiberglass padding and panels for the floors above, very common of what we see on today's developments. And we have also some painted aluminum corner system to wrap up the entire missing. The, if we go to the next slide, please. This is again another view from Dudley Street. On the right, you'll see our elevation on Wendover Street, which is a smaller street. We have put our residential entrance on that side, as you see highlighted by that orange-redish canopy, and change in the elevation above that is to emphasize the location of that entrance. And then on the same street, also, we have the entrance for the parking garage. Let me go to the next, please. This is our basement. We have a very small basement, just used for storage and MP spaces. Onto the first floor, please. This is our first floor. You can see on the left our three retail commercial spaces facing on Dudley Street. And you can see at the center our core with the main residential entrance and residence amenities, as laundry, elevator, elevator lobby, the stairs. We have included a back storage room for 25 bikes. And on the right, you'll see our parking garage for five parking spaces. Onto the next, please. This is our typical floor plate. It's a very typical layout, double-loaded corridor with the units on both sides. It's a very small, efficient, compact kind of layout. The next, and this is the last, I think. There's a small change in the second floor, only for one accessible, fully accessible unit. And this is basically our building. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. And just to confirm, how many of these will be IDP units?
Under this proposal, Madam Chair, it'll be four units. Calculates at 16%. All those units will be at 70% AMI.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have, I have one, I guess it's a question. It's going to be 25 units in this building on Dudley Street, and it's only going to be four low-income apartments?
Yes, Mr. Langham. Again, it was 20 units at 15, and then when they went through the Article 80 with the BPDA, the BPDA requested that to go up to four units. So that would be, so there is going to be one one-bed, two two-beds, and one three-bed, because they felt the larger units, especially a three-bed, would be good in the community to keep family-type units there.
Other questions from the board? Okay, is someone on from BPDA? Is the project manager on from BPDA?
Hi, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair and Members of the board. My name is Scott Greenall, and I'm a project assistant from the BPDA. I'm filling in for Quinn Valsich, who's the project manager throughout this process. This project completed the Article 80 review process, including a BPDA-sponsored public meeting held on February 8th, 2023, and was approved by the BPDA board on April 13th, 2023. The project received support from neighbors both in the public meeting and in our online comment period. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair. Oh, sorry, my hand just went up. Caller 173699. You're unmuted. I'm sorry, we can't hear you if you're speaking. Okay, I'm not sure what else to say. I have no additional raised hands. Hello?
Hi, yes, go ahead. Hi, are you voting here, Mino?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair and Members of the board. My name is Nicole Lowe. I'm Director of Policy for Councilor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson's District 7 office. And on behalf of our office, I would like to express our full support for this project at this time, and we believe it will be a great contribution to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, Councilor, no record support.
Madam Chair, Joe McGuck and City Councilman Jacob's office, we're in support.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
None at the moment.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion for approval.
May I have a second?
A second?
Oh, still sorry.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion does not carry.
Mr. Stembridge, on behalf of the BPDA, I'd ask for a motion for deferral, as this was an Article 80 project, for a full board.
May I have another motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Javier, what's the next available date?
Next available date, Madam Chair, is August 8.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vujini.
Thanks, thank you.
Next, please.
At this point, since we've just passed 11:30.
Oh, yep.
We'd like to...
Yes, yes. As a reminder to our, to our remaining applicants, we have a five-member board today. Applicants have the option to defer to a later hearing date to be heard by the full board. With that, Mr. Stembridge?
Madam Chair, I have a deferral. You're taking deferrals?
Yes, please.
Would be 11:30 time, yeah.
11:30, correct. It's Attorney Richard Lynn's 245 Summer Street, on behalf of petitioner. 94 Morris Street is the address, Mr. Stembridge?
So there would be, there would be two, two companion cases, first being case BOA 1285218, with the address of 94 Morris Street. And along with that, we have case BOA 1285217, with the address also being 94 Morris Street.
Okay, Mr. Lynn, let's go for it.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Members of the board. Richard Lynn's 245 Summer Street, on behalf of petitioner, requesting an administrative deferral, requesting a full board.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Javier?
That would be August 8, Madam Chair.
Okay.
August 8. Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Returning to the 11 o'clock cases. Next, we have case BOA 1462620, the address being 115 Dearing Road. Is the applicant and/or their representative present? Do we have anyone for 115 Dearing Road?
Yes, I'm here, yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you put your name and address into record and just walk us through your proposal?
Yes, my, yes, my name is Ezekiel Luigo, the owner of 115 Dearing Road, Maripan. And I should have my architect on, on the line, Mr. Raphael from the Acropolis Design Consultants. I'll just give a little introduction, and he should be able to give more, give more details about, you know, all the changes. So I'll just give a little bit of an introduction here. So on April 24th, 2020, last year, the property caught on fire. Thank God, everybody came out, okay? Unfortunately, the insurance company came in, brought in their demolition company contractor, who ended up demo the whole third floor and the roof without due process. So when I was put into that position, I had to go and get an architect, who's, Mr. Raphael with the Acropolis Design, to redesign the whole third floor and the roof. So he'll, he'll give more detail, he should be able to give more details about the project and everything else. And I hope he's on the line.
Thank you. Jessica, are you able to find him?
What's the name?
Raphael, Raphael Hernandez. He may be calling from like 774. The last four digits should be 3187.
I don't, oh, let me see, is it Acropolis?
Yes, yes, Acropolis, yes.
Okay, go ahead, I unmuted you, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hi, I'm Raphael Hernandez from Acropolis Design. I'm working with Ezekiel to get this project developed. Ezekiel, you have any other comments, or do you want me to just go through?
No, yeah, just go through, please.
Can I, can I scroll through these all of it, through this package, or do you have to do it?
The officer has to do it, just let her forward page you.
Yeah, you move forward to the floor plans and, right here is. So the, the existing building, in our opinion, is a three-story building because the size of the third floor exceeds your definition of the two-and-a-half-story condition. We are increasing to square out the walls to simplify the construction and to keep costs down, to try, to, and we are increasing the number of bedrooms. And we are increasing the number of bedrooms in that space, uh, but the footprint's not changing, the building height is not changing. It's just gonna be a simpler, more boxy design for, to keep the cost down, and to, um, since this was a fire loss, and there is a, obviously, a budget, so this is why we proposed this design for the project. If you keep, scroll to the next page. This shows the, the, basically, we're duplicating the layout of the second floor onto the third, and finishing the basement, um, for storage, and, and, in the, in the building. Um, and if you go back to, if you go to the next page, I believe it's where the, it shows the FAR total numbers, uh, and then, there's a brief description of how the, what the existing is, and the proposed, and why we believed that this is already not a two-and-a-half story building. Um, and by s- having the third-floor walls before height, we do increase the FAR, but it is only by point oh-eight, uh, to the ratio. And, um, I don't think this would be a detriment to the neighborhood, um, in our opinion. Do you have any, if you have any specific questions, um, I'd like to hear them, please.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Uh, can I have public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board, calling in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office is to defer judgment to this board. Uh, some background information, community process, to understand it was a productive one. Um, the applicant spoke with neighbors and eventually met with the Greater Madapen Neighborhood Council, which voted to support this proposal. Uh, with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, uh, morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Jordan Freyas from Counselor Ricardo Orell's office, like to go over record and support of this. Thank you.
Madam Chair and members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge Michael Flaherty, in record support.
And Johnny? And Johnny, do you, would you like to give testimony?
Yes, I'm from Counselor Mania's office, and we're in support.
Thank you. No additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Like to make a motion?
To approve?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Uh, chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Next, next we have case BOA one-four-seven-three-two-eight-three, with the address of six-oh-four Metropolitan Avenue, is the applicant and or their representative present?
Uh, yes, hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, okay, maybe. One sec, yes? Madam Chair, Ambassador, and members of the board, good morning. Um, my name is Caesar De Silva, I am a local architect and contractor. I live in Dorchester, and I own this piece of land in Hyde Park. I would like to contribute to the solution of the housing problem in Boston by building a history unit building in six-oh-four Metropolitan of Hyde Park. I, um, would like to have your support, and if you have any questions, please let me know, I'd like to answer, uh, the questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, are you walking us through a pro- a proposal, or are you asking us just if we have questions right now?
Again, if you want me to walk through the proposal, I will do that.
Yeah, I think just provide the context, you know, we'll-
Okay.
What are the violations that, that, that are involved, and, you know, just the context?
Okay, I do have, like, every, most of the lots in the city. Uh, it's a small lot, but, uh, we're providing here, uh, on the side, where it says on the left, uh, we need ten feet, we have ten feet, uh, side lots, and go back up, stay there. Uh, then, uh, we have on the street side, this is a corner lot, we have like, uh, to the back, seven foot four inches, but towards the front, in the middle, we have around, uh, fourteen to seventeen feet on the right side. We're providing, uh, in the back, actually, there is a space for four cars, two in front, two in the back, and then on the right side, if we go back, there is a space for another, uh, two cars. Uh, so, we can provide here, uh, four to s- uh, one-four to six cars off the street. And it is a green area on the corner, uh, from the, uh, front to the side, for like, uh, sizable, uh, space for lawn and green area, doing, due to the, this is a corner lot. Uh, if we go to the next page, uh, do I have control of this?
No, you don't.
You don't, okay. Uh, let's, this is a plain, simple basement, uh, open space, no unit storage. Uh, go, let's go to the first floor, uh, Madam Chair, or Madam Chair, okay. Uh, here we have a, um, three-bedrooms unit, uh, a nice large living slash dining in kitchen. We have three bedrooms, uh, which are twelve, the average is twelve feet by eleven, uh, to most of them. And we have one and a half bath, and, uh, two, uh, means of egress, a front and then a second means of egress. I believe, let's get to the second floor, uh, please. And here again, is just, uh, another, uh, layout, that has a little extent of living, dining, and kitchen, and the same bedrooms, the same size of bedrooms, and all, uh, three floors. Uh, I would like very much to contribute and, uh, to the, uh, solving the housing problems here in Boston by building these three units. I'm an architect, and I'm a contractor here in Boston-Dorchester, and I would like to have this first opportunity, uh, to have this relief and your support to build-
Thank you.
-first project, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair and members of the board, Bob D'Amico, BTD. Uh, I have several concerns about the parking plan. Uh, the plan only reflects one parking space, and the applicant is requesting four, and, uh, there's a plan for two curb cuts, which is also not reflected on the plan. And finally, um, from what I can see, there's front yard parking, um, on this plan, which is something that we are, um, adamantly opposed to. Uh, with that being said, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Mr. De Silva, do you want to address the parking comments that were made, the concerns around curb cuts and, um, front yard parking?
Yes, I see here, uh, if you see the drawing that is, uh, presented right now, it's not only one parking. If you see the back, there is two cars, and then another two cars can be behind it, like you have-
It's, I think what he, I'm sorry, the concern was that your, I think your plans called for one parking, but you're showing more than one parking, and you're also showing, and you're also showing two curb cuts.
Correct, can be the curb cut, I think, one is already there, the other one that we will bring to one other side, we can put it on the other side, on yet different address, on different street, but I don't recall showing only one parking. This is, the, uh, site plan shows pretty much the first site plan, if we go back, uh, to the second page, Madam? Actually, the engineer's site plan shows not only on the, uh, just drawings, the, but, uh, if you go back to the, uh, site plan, you can, okay, right here, you see the space one, two, that could be turned back, and there is another one right here on the side that can go back, so if I mention one parking, I don't remember when, I do apologize, but there is space for at least three cars.
Okay, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board, calling in with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office is to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information on the community process. Our office held two abutters meetings, uh, the first on October twenty-seventh, and the second on February twenty-eighth. Uh, there were opposition from abutters at both meetings, where neighbors stated that they felt the project was too large for the lot, and also expressed concerns for parking, um, increased traffic, uh, related to, or impacting, excuse me, uh, the high school's new mission, VCLA, and the ACC being on that street as well. Uh, the applicant went on to meet with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association twice, once in November, and again at their December meeting. Um, the media abutters were present at both of those meetings. Um, the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association wanted the original ISU refusal letter to change, to address some of the issues such as insufficient off-street parking, which they felt, uh, that there was errors made on the initial sightings. When that new refusal letter, uh, was issued, uh, the applicant went back to the HBNN, excuse me, and re-conducted, uh, our second meeting shortly before that. The Civic Association, uh, determined that they were unable to support the proposal, um, due to what they feel is adverse impacts on the neighborhood expressed by abutters. Our office received an additional letter of opposition from an abutter, but we also received ten signatures in support of the project that the applicant sent over to our office. I believe both of those things have been made available, uh, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, with that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Jordan Freyas from Counselor Orell's office, I'll be on the go on record and supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Sullivan, and then Jay Paget?
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
Hi, how are you? Um, good morning, Madam Chair and board. Uh, my name is Susan Sullivan, and I'm the director abutter, who has lived in the neighborhood for many years, and I totally, totally oppose this. He has never taken care of this property in all the time that he has owned it. I'm sure there's violations out there that I don't know of. I have spoken with council also to protect my property, and I plan on possibly having someone come out to survey, because he has, I just don't feel this is right, he's gonna take away my son, which heats my house. Um, the parking, the accidents that we have had on that corner, it will take out sight for people coming out of that street. I'm just wanna leave that, I, I'll leave it at this, that I'm just totally, totally-
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. I, Jay Paget, I live across the street, five-ninety-three Metropolitan Ave. Yeah, I, I echo Susan's comments, I'm really concerned that, uh, this project is far too outsized and big for this lot. Um, the lot really never has been taken care of, so there's a stewardship sort of responsibility question I have with the owner developer. But, you know, the, the main thing is, it is far, it's just too big for this lot, and the, and the design is very much out of character with every other house around it, so, thank you.
Are you muted?
I, uh, I'm in the Office of Counselor Brian Orell, uh, Office of Tomorrow, just wanting to offer support for this project.
Okay. Anna Nanji, you looking to give, I think you're part of the presentation team, right? Okay, should be all set.
I'm from Counselor Mania's office, and our office is in support.
Thank you. No additional raised hands. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Response from the applicant?
What's the question, Norm?
I'm sorry, any, any response from the applicant?
Oh, okay, yep. Mr. De Silva, any comments, uh?
I, uh, to tell you the truth, I owned this piece of land for a little while. It is, uh, and I've been, uh, sometimes cleaning the lot. I know that the neighbor calls the, uh, ISD, uh, a lot, and if I didn't, uh, clean, clean the lot as much, I apologize, I will go back and start maintaining the lot. But, as you know, if I can build on it, it'll be another major expense to me, but I apologize, I'll try to, if they're concerned that I haven't, I tell her that here for the, this weekend or the next weekend, I'll start maintaining the lot, but if it's not to their, uh, thing, I apologize. But other than that, I would like their support, I understand that I will take her sun, uh, from her window, the sun she get, but in, I'd rather create housing, and I don't think I could afford to maintain a lot as a park, uh, in that location, so, I apologize if, uh, many houses in between houses don't get, uh, sun on the side, you get to the front or the back. And to me, I will take any, uh, whatever they want, the community needing, wanted to help for me to build, but what I see, they don't want no house there at all, and, you know, that's, I believe, uh, uh, I'm not a, uh, in the, I'm not a city, and I, and I'm a-
Thank you, sir, thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't find the right words, but-
Appreciate it, thank you. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
I will put forth a motion to approve of the proviso that plans be submitted to the BPDA for designer view, with attention to consolidating parking to Stafford Street, uh, reducing the curb cuts to only one, and reducing impervious surface area.
Uh, would you add BTD review?
Yes.
Is there a second, okay. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Uh, chair votes yes, motion does not carry. Can I have an alternate motion?
I'll do this motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Uh, Madam Chair, very clearly, the defer date be, uh, August twenty-ninth.
Okay, Mr. De Silva, August twenty-ninth, your case will be heard again.
Thank you, man, thank you, members of the board, thank you, Chair, thanks, Miss Ambassador.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will move it to the rediscussions for eleven-thirty. Should we remind, uh, I don't-
Um, I can remind again, sure. As a reminder, we have a five-member board today, applicants have the option to defer to a later hearing date to be heard by the full board. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next, uh, next we have case BOA one-four-zero-seven-one-zero-two, with the address of one-ten Tudor Street, is the applicant and or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair and members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti, business address on one-sixty-eight Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. Uh, joining me today is the owner, Albert Hall, and the architect, Eric Zacherson. This is a proposal to raise the existing structure and erect a new single-family dwelling with one-car-covered parking space at grade level. Level one will consist of a new proposed curb cut for garage parking in the front. In the rear of that grade level, there will be an additional space consisting of a kitchen and an open living area. Level two will consist of one bedroom, a living room, and a second kitchen. Level three will consist of two bedrooms. We have violations for insufficient lot size, as the lot size is approximately pre-existing at eleven-hundred-and-seventy-three square feet. We have a height violation due to the text amendment to the zoning code that when demolishing the existing height of a structure, that structure's height is the max. We are proposing thirty-five feet, nine inches, which is compliant under Article sixty-eight, below the forty-feet requirement. Uh, we have a violation for insufficient front yard. We are proposing to construct a property line, which is in line with the other properties on Tudor Street as well. Insufficient rear yard. This parcel here is subjected to a shallow lot, which would require us to comply with a fifteen-foot setback, and the proposal here calls for ten-foot setback. Insufficient parking and maneuverability, as the proposal only allows for one car, which would have to reverse onto that small side street of Tudor. There is currently no parking on Tudor Street as well. Uh, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to the board for any questions or- At this point, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I take public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted a Butters' meeting for 110 Tudor Street on December 12, 2022. The proponent answered all questions and concerns. The City Side Neighborhood Association is in support of this proposal because of how the proponent worked with the Butters to address their concerns. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Good morning, Madam chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The president would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors and a good community process with compromises on both sides. Council President Flynn respectfully requests that the team continue to work closely with the community on any quality of life issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Blackman, the quality of community support.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, put forward a motion to approve with the provisos that plans be submitted to BPDA for designer view with attention to addressing parking maneuverability by eliminating spaces or creating tandem spaces, increasing the rear yard setback to allow for light and air to abutting buildings and decrease overall lot coverage and increase the front yard setback to achieve minimum 5'8" compliant sidewalk.
May I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next, we have, next we have case BOA 1264670 with the address being 240 Silver Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Stunbridge. My name is Kevin Cludier from the Cludier Law Firm with the business address of 1990 Center Street in West Roxbury and I represent the owner and applicant of this project.
Okay, can you walk us through?
Well, sure. I am asking the board today, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm respectfully requesting another deferral in this matter. This is a project that involves the demolition of an existing two-story, single-family home with a proposal to convert it and redevelop it to a four-story, two-family home. It enjoys the support from the City Side Neighborhood Association and a number of Butters, or a number of citizens in that area. However, we are flanked on either side by a single Butter who owns the properties on the left and right side of this property, who's raised some objection shortly before our original ZBA date. The deferral is to allow my clients and the project architect additional time to work with that Butter to come up with a plan that could satisfy that Butter's interests as well as my client. So I'd be respectfully requesting a deferral and if the board is inclined to allow it, I'd ask that perhaps in the fall, I don't know if August, will be sufficient amount of time for us to work together with that Butter.
Thank you. Ms. Hobieir?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Early as it followed would be September 12th, but if the applicant want, it could be in October. October 17th would be the next date.
That, I think the October date would put us in the best position to work together.
So October 17th would be it.
Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I make the motion to defer to August 17th.
Uh, October 17th, you mean?
October 17th.
Thank you. No worries. All right, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have two companion cases. First being BOA, case BOA 1407501 with the address being 518 to 520 Park Street. With that, we have case BOA 1445525 with the address being 522 Park Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 8th Street, First Floor, South Boston. The proposal in front of us today is to change the occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling by way of a full gut rehab along with an addition of three dormers onto the existing structure. Again, that existing footprint of the building will be maintained. Ancillary parking of the three spaces are going to be added on the sister application of the 522 Park Street. There's a reasoning why that we did not combine these two parcels and hence is the fact that 522 Park Street is one of those deep restricted lots that only allows the dominant parcel owner the right to extend living space onto that lot, a garden, shed, or parking as this case is here within the proposal. The dormers that are being designed here are to provide an expansion of livable space on the third floor while maintaining a typical three-decker style. Dormer on the right front is approximately 10 foot 3 inches wide and 14 feet 3 inches long. The dormer on the right rear is approximately 12 feet by 2 and 1/2 inches wide and 30 feet by 1 inch long. The dormer on the left will run the length of the house at approximately 49 feet 8 inches long and 10 feet by 3 inches wide. This proposal is within a 3F 6,000 sub-district. The total lot size of the existing structure is 3,304 square feet and the lot size for the parking is an additional 4,368 square feet, which would amount to 7,672 square feet. Unit one will consist of basement and first floor of approximately 2,258 square feet. Livable space in the basement in three bedrooms, living room, dining room on the first floor. Basement ceiling height is 9 feet and will have two window wells as well as two means of egress stairways. Unit two will be located on the second floor and will consist of approximately 1,212 square feet of living, including a living room, dining, kitchen, and a two-bedroom. Unit three will be located on the third floor and will consist of approximately 1,281 square feet with the living room, dining, kitchen, and two bedrooms as well. Each unit has a proposed rail balcony of approximately 10 feet long and 14 feet wide. We have violations for conformity with existing building alignment in front yard setback. I'd like to mention that the existing front yard is 4 feet 9 inches and is not being changed as the footprint of the building is remaining. Additional lot area is another violation. It's my opinion, we should not have been cited for this as there is no additional lot area required for this sub-district. We have a floor area ratio violation. The existing FAR is a 1.2, which is pre-existing non-conforming. And as, what is compliant in this area is a .4, we are seeking the 1.64. Building height is excessive in stories as we're proposing three stories. What is compliant is 2 and 1/2, but we are compliant as far as the height is required. And the last violation that we are seeking relief for is the rear yard. Again, this is pre-existing non-conforming at 9 feet 11 inches. At this time, I'd want to pause for any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board, some background information on the community process. Our office held in the Butters' meeting on December 6th, where the applicant answered questions that the residents had. They then were in touch with the local civic association. We're unaware of any major concerns at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Aliyamidew Awuwuwa with the Office of City Council, Sir Brian Morrell. In regards to these Park Street parcels, the abutting Civic West of Washington Coalition gave their support and no letters of opposition received. The council lets go our record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Have a good lunch.
Do we have any other raised hands?
I have no additional raised hands. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval with BPDA designer view, but I'll definitely accept it to the bonus.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Good luck. Thank you.
Madam Chair, sorry, this is hard. Board, can you repeat the proviso? I'm sorry, it came out muddled for us.
The proviso is that plans be submitted to the BPDA for designer view with attention to dormers.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Okay, next case?
Next case is BOA 1422723 with the address being 26 and Sonia Road. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Ms. Weller Brimby, present?
Joseph Luna, Luna Design Group Architect, present.
Okay. Are you speaking on behalf of the owner?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then please introduce yourself and walk us through.
Okay, once again, Joseph Luna. Company's name is Luna Design Group. We are the project architects for 26 of Sonia Road, speaking on behalf of our client Cynthia and Sean Brady. It's a relatively simple project. The project consists of adding two dormers to an unfinished 812-square-foot attic space. Total increase with these dormers will increase the size of the attic to 926, 114-square-foot aggregate add. The attic is currently unfinished and plans to be unfinished. The two, there are two dormers as part of this project, one on the south street side, which is a matching 6-foot gable dormer, which is the one we are seeking relief for because we have a setback violation, 20-foot required setback, and we are at 17 feet. There is no relief required for the shed dormer on the west side. I want to again bring up that the attic space will be unfinished, so there is no increase in the present FAR. My client realizes that if they do plan to finish the attic at a different, at another time, it will require zoning relief because this will put us over the required .4 FAR.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
How's it going? My name is Dan Hudson. I'm the mayor's liaison to West Roxbury. Just wanted to, we're going to defer the board on this. The applicant presented on July 27th in front of the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, they were approved unanimously. No questions or concerns from the Butters or anyone else that had a comment on it, but we defer to the judgment of the board on this. Thank you.
Do we have any other raised hands? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll put forward a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stunbridge. Mr. Stunbridge?
Uh, sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yeah.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. So I'm guessing we need to adjourn till 1. Is that right, Hobieir?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, see you all back at 1.
Thank you, board. Have a good day.